I collected half a gallon of water and looking at it to make sure that everything is aesthetically right. And like Mr. Hill say, we only have one complaint and it was, we started actually in April the first using Wallace and we only have received one complaint and an immediate flushing of the water line resolved the issue. Other than that, we also doing our standard SoCs, BOCs and Bacti samples that we collect based on their schedule from dinner and so far, everything is good. We have noticed of 400,000 gallons a day's less usage from the water plant. And then we have also have noticed that he helps maintaining mile pass full, which at the same time he helped us fill up several times Rocky Point and it also helped us maintain the ground storage tank, the 210 booster pump station.
That's, that's a big, that's a big.
That is a big improvement.
It's all tied together.
It is all tied together.
One word other, but.
Yes, sir.
That's good.
Thank you.
I know, you know, Mr. Chairman, I know, but you can move on, but I mean, I know that you guys hadn't been there that long and you have had to learn a lot about how, how the system plays and sections because you can look at it on paper, but hydraulics are still hydraulics and there's, sometimes it behaves strangely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Make a motion, motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion, second, all those in favor. What do we, wait a minute, we already approved that second.
We already approved it.
Yeah.
All right then.
See, you're dragging, you're dragging me down with you.
No, I was just jumping ahead and go ahead and get the well, the well station built, you know, that's all.
We're using wells and we approve. And you're testing and we approve that too.
Do you want, we need to open this dependable to health for, okay, we're now open this dependable to health?
Well, annually, I'd like to come before commissioners and present the child fatality prevention team's annual report. The date of this report was supposed to be in February until everything got a little crazy and so finally have an agenda that we could put it on. So I'm not going to rehash a lot of the report. Obviously you can see the results from 2019. The list of participants on this provision team include Health Department, DSS, Schools, EMS, the Medical Examiner's Office, Sheriff's Department, Mental Health, New Hanover Regional Medical Center, Guardian Athlitem and the District Court Judge. These are in the statutes as to who is to participate on this committee. And so the committee met four times in 2019. There were eight cases. Six of those occurred in 2017 and they were not sent to the team until March of 2019. Mostly due to lack of information. It's getting a medical examiner's report takes a long time. If you can get it in a year, sometimes you're fortunate. When law enforcement is involved, it does extend that timeframe as well. So the fatalities for, that they reviewed ranged from birth to five years. And of the cases that they, of the new cases they reviewed, seven were completed and closed. One, they're waiting on additional information. But the causes of death for these children were a homicide, three different cases in 2017, of which one has been resolved and two, law enforcement is still involved on those cases. You have prematurity, sepsis of a newborn, bacterial sepsis and ill-defined and unspecified cause, cause of death. So the team then is responsible for coming up with what kind of actions they can maybe suggest that would help to prevent future deaths. And aside from trying to work on some parenting and also some substance use of mental health, the team has worked in the schools about talking about smoking and vaping to discourage that, which can be a cause of SIDS and other problems during prenatal time. They also were able to purchase six pack in place for families that didn't have a crib so that we could have safe sleep. They've attended necessary trainings that are required and then just ongoing recommendations of early prenatal care, safe sleep, you know, car safety, et cetera. Does anybody have any questions about these?
Do these numbers, and I think you said that it did, but since 2017, do these numbers include any child fatalities that occurred in the home in 2018 or 2019?
Yes.
That are still being investigated?
Those, and there are some that were continued, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So I was going to present that report. The next report I'm to share with you is our state of the county health report, which you have in your packet. Just a reminder that, you know, the community health assessment is done every four years and then in between annually, we have to do a state of the county health report that's due the first of March. And once again, this kind of was put on the side burner when COVID came along. So with the community health assessment, we identified three priorities, health priorities, which were mental health and substance use disorders, nutrition and physical activity and cancer education and prevention. So then your state of the county health report is supposed to update a lot of your data to inform the residents of the county as to different strategies that we've been putting in place to address those top three priorities and just some updated demographics. On page two is a list of just a few of those. Estimated population in 2018 for Pender was 62,162. We know that's higher already. Average age for Pender County resident is 42.7 years. Eighty-one percent of residents are white, 15% African-American and 7% Hispanic. Team pregnancy for 15 to 17-year-olds is lower than the state, which that has usually been the trend. Really good to see. Two-thirds of pregnant women are getting prenatal care in their first trimester and only 1% of our prenatal women did not get any prenatal care. Eighty-six percent of women chose to breastfeed at the time of hospital discharge. The other information in here lists the top 10 leading causes of death in Pender, which cancer, heart disease and stroke are the top three. And of course, note that cancer, education and prevention was one of the three priorities we had selected in our community health assessment. On pages four through seven, you can see some activities that have been going on in Pender County to help address a lot of these issues. I'm not going to go into these. They are available on the Health Department's website. There are copies that have been left in the libraries and anyone can come to the Health Department and request one or they can just email us and we'll be glad to send them a copy. Part of the requirement for this, when your state of the county health report is being measured or scored, is that you must include new initiatives that are going on in the county as well as emerging issues. And I've listed those new initiatives like touch my breath program in the schools and a variety of other really exciting things. When you talk about substance use education for women that have had babies that have been addicted to substances, then on top of it, emerging issues. Typically, I've generally put public health preparedness and response on emerging issues because generally we're thinking of some kind of communicable disease outbreak. Normally you would think it would be a vector control outbreak and directly, I guess COVID is since it did come from that. is, since it did come from that, if not from the lab, that came from a bat. But we did mention that and right before we were to submit it, COVID did come out. I certainly didn't know at the time that we submitted it that COVID-19 would become pandemic. So that is for your information and I don't know if you have any questions.
May I ask a question? Ms. Moser, the safe drinking water initiative?
Mm-hmm.
Being that Western Pender County has an abundance of wells, most of our people are on wells, do we periodically test? Do we have any progress where people can get their water tested from their wells? How, how does that work?
We leave it up to the homeowner. If, if they have concerns, we will test. There would be a fee if.
What is that fee?
I'm wanting to say around $100. By the time we send staff out and then we submit the test to the state lab. And then on top of it, if there are medical concerns, then we do not charge, or if a physician has requested that the family get their well water tested. We did a lot of testing of wells post-florence and I know it was almost 100 wells we tested post-florence and we did those for free and then advised individuals on how, how to take care of them. Surprisingly, there were not that many that had been infected due to the flood, but we did test anyone that requested.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
How about suicide in teenagers? Is that?
Suicide in teenagers has not been a problem in Pender. The suicide has been in our, typically our white males, 40 to 60 years old, that are typically self-employed, have had some kind of financial, marital, personal issue that has caused them, I guess, to lose hope. And that's where we have seen the majority of our suicides. It's really tough when you're self-employed and trying to manage a business and that's generally what we have seen. We don't see it in teens, thank goodness.
I'm sure right now with so many people, the schools out and your home, there's a lot of pressure on families and sometimes it leads to depression, I'm sure.
Oh, absolutely. I know that, you know, I've worked with the West to monitor the number of reports that come in for suspected abuse of children or adults to see if there's any kind of increase there. I don't know that we've seen a huge increase, but it seems like this past week, we've had a few cases that we, the SS had to be involved with, but right now it's been holding pretty steady. I do know that maybe there were a couple of homicides this weekend. Sheriff? And so I don't know, you know.
She had to say it, didn't she?
No, it's just that I don't know, you know, sometimes we start getting on each other's nerves at home. I don't know what the causes of these were, needless to say, but I guess we can expect about anything from suicide to homicide.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
I was going to give you just a real quick COVID-19 update.
Bob was going to ask you, but I didn't want to put you on the spot, but since you're volunteering, go ahead.
Well, just real quickly for, as of today, Pender County healthcare providers, just those in Pender County, have conducted 219 tests, 199 are negative. We've had 17 positives and three tests are pending. There's the 17 that we have, 12 are males, five females. Their ages are 22 to age 60, but the majority of our, those that were getting COVID have been in their 50s. Then there's 11 whites, five African Americans, and one Hispanic. Also, on the North Carolina DHHS website, they did start updating according to ZIP code. So I pulled that for you. And right now, according to ZIP code, Burgaw has eight cases, Rocky Point one, Hampstead six, and Watha two. We have 10 of the 17 that recovered. We have one death. One person is hospitalized. One offender that was positive was transferred to another prison and we have four recovering at home. The concern, of course, the last two cases we, we got as of yesterday and then this morning were related to meat processing plants, two different plants outside the county. I don't know how many Pender County workers work in some of those plants, but the adjoining counties have certainly seen a large number of cases. In fact, for our region, Pender has the smallest amount of cases. We talk about, well, maybe we're not testing enough, but we, we have no idea how many individuals are going outside the county to be tested. We don't get that information. The only time we get information is when there's a positive test. So Columbus is sitting at 167 cases right now with 10 deaths. Duplin has 120, Sampson 88. So those are your big numbers right now. I know Columbus had three nursing home residential facilities that did have COVID spread through that and that accounted for about 76 of their residents were in congregate settings, so.
But Pender has had no, no positive ID.
We have worked really closely with our nursing homes. We touch base with them at least two or three times a week. They instituted measures last month at least to no visitors and they've done a great job about minimizing any kind of potential. Not to say that, you know, that won't happen, but they've done a great job.
I mean, Woodbury Ever, our way has two entrances. One of them is blocked off with that big bus that they have. I mean, they are really, and it's, it's good that they're, they've got a protocol in place.
How many of that total 17 were incarcerated?
Three.
Three?
Can, can I ask another question?
And that's why Burgaw has eight cases.
That's really, that's really just for the record. When it comes to dealing with the prison, we only know what information they release, when they release it. We have zero jurisdiction, zero.
Control.
Control, zero ability or authority to help them in any way. They have their own procedures unless they ask us, right?
We have stayed in touch with them. They have a great medical director at the prison and they have shared all the information as far as measures they're taking when they check temperatures of staff and everyone wearing masks. So they are following the division or Department of Public Safety's, which the Department of Division of Corrections, however, that branch is now under public safety. So they are following all the guidance that the state gives out. My concern initially had been because of the transfer in of offenders from other prisons and there are other prisons in the state that have had outbreaks. So it, the potential for some kind of spread into the prison because of transfers, they have started limiting those and they were considering not testing anyone before they were released. And I think that they're gonna, they're looking at a little bit of stronger measures for that.
I just, you know.
All we can do is advise.
I think some people here, they think, you know, some people might just think it's a, it's a Pender facility and we've got some kind of jurisdiction or some kind of influence or something over it because it sits in Pender County and we don't.
No, we don't. You can go on the NCDHHS website and there's also a link to congregate settings. So you can see all the nurses, the names of the nursing homes, the number of cases, the number of staff that are, have tested positive in those nursing homes, as well as how many cases and number of tests have been done in correctional facilities.
In answer to that, if, if we have Pender County residents who are being housed in an out-of-county facility, I know that if Pender County residents tested positive in another state, that they, we have to report them.
They would count as our numbers. Now, as far as a correctional facility, it will count for the county that they live, the prison is.
Okay. All right. So it's different.
Because these individuals are not Pender County residents. They are from other counties.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask one more question?
In follow-up to the COVID, I've been hearing a lot of things, Mr. Stewart, about perhaps there's a crisis in foster care with students having no place to go if they were not aged out yet, or, or do, do we have any impact to our foster care system in Pender County with this COVID and the stay-at-home restrictions?
I don't know of any, do you?
I don't know.
No.
Okay. By the way, I want to thank you for your assistance last week in helping that, that individual that we were trying to, she had fallen through the cracks. So thank you for your prompt assistance with that.
That's it.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it. Do we need to open us the social services board? Okay, that sounds good. So is our attorney still with us?
I am.
Okay, do you have, we're at that time. Do you have any items?
Um, just, and we have a total chat, couple items for closed session. The item three, attorney-client privilege, and item five regarding the potential acquisition of real property. On the legal front, the courts are still uncertain as to when they exactly will reopen. Our chief district court judge, Chief Corbin, is the co-head of the committee that's been appointed to address that, but Chief Justice Beasley has indicated that we will be having jury trials at least through the month of June and with the courts potentially to partially reopen in first. But there, again, just to kind of keep you up to date on that and the, the clerks and the, the judges are trying to evaluate how they're going to move ahead because there's going to be a very, very large backlog of cases. And so that, that is being looked at and, you know, I'll, I'll update you as we get new information. The chief justice gave a slightly modified order on last Friday, but it didn't, it did not designate when there would be other things reopening. The biggest challenge, of course, is it, it will be very difficult to have, to keep the limits on the number of people and maintain social distancing with the normal court operations. And so that is part of what Chief Corbin and the, the, the chief justice are looking at. So that, that is out there and we will, you know, I, I will update you as we get more information on that.
Okay, did you mention personnel, Trey?
No.
Uh, I did not, but we certainly can. That would be item six.
Yeah, we've got to have, that's got to be one of the items. The other thing is, you know, the draft letter you and I were discussing this morning?
Yeah.
I'd like to be able to talk to that, about that in closed session if we could.
Yeah, that would be attorney-client.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, while we're still on public record, I'd like to reiterate for those who are non-represented and have traffic tickets and other things, Trey, correct me if I'm wrong, the clerk in their office has been very good about rescheduling these appearances and they should be getting notice, continuing these until such time as they can convene and appear in court. And that's what they're doing, right?
Yes, ma'am. And also as part of the chief justice's order, if someone has not made a payment that was due, that's not to be reported or relayed to DMV so that their license doesn't get suspended. And that, that also extends through the, to the June 1st deadline, in, in the making when you do first, the first day. But so that is, you're absolutely correct. If they have, if they've been working on that and there should not be.
Any penalties or?
The payment that was due on a, a fine or a penalty, that does not get relayed such if their license gets suspended.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that it, Trey?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Manager, do you have anything?
Just, we've completed the manager's draft of the budget last week. It was not a easy budget. We tried to limit as much as we could the impact to the fund balance. We've, the departments have been very understanding and helpful in identifying areas that we could cut while still keeping service levels at the same. And we'll have, obviously have a budget meeting with the board in the coming weeks to present the budget to you.
What, what are our budget meeting dates again?
They are May 11th, May 14th.
Could you just send those to us again by email?
Please do.
Okay. Yeah.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Ms. Newt, Commissioner Newton, do you have something? Commissioner McQuaid?
I just want to repeat what I said last time. I really appreciate the Health Department, what they're doing for the county and the put, line here of keeping us informed and the nurses that are working and they're probably a lot of times they're facing circumstances we're not even aware of, but I really appreciate everything they do. And all the county employees are out there doing things that are, they're on the line every day.
Thanks for recognizing them.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Pete Ryan?
Just one thing. I continue to get phone calls from business owners in our county, very concerned about whether or not we're going to be reopening. Of course, we have discussions around the current restrictions. I also ask them what they're willing to do and, and encourage them to submit plans to either the municipality or to whoever the power-to-be is. Since the county is, is pretty much in line with what the governor's put in place, there's no real, no real item here for us, other than we have discussed and I've discussed with you, writing a letter to, to try and urge.
And we're going to talk about that. What I do want to say, and I made a comment about this in the video last week, I don't, I may not necessarily agree with what the governor's doing, but it is an executive order and we don't have a choice but to follow the executive order.
Correct.
If, if there's an alternative, I would be glad to listen to that alternative. But just like with the sheriff's department, I think, and the sheriff and I talked about this before I made that statement the other day to the public, an executive order is an executive order and we don't have a choice but to follow that order. But yeah, we're going to talk about a letter. So.
Nah, I'm all for that, by the way.
So what I've encouraged them to do is, is in the case where they're in a town, you know, certainly they need to be talking to their city council people and their mayors and, and putting out there what they're willing to do in order to get opened if, if. and, and putting out there what they're willing to do in order to get opened, if, if not just partially. You know, certainly we need to still have social distancing going on. We've been very, very fortunate to Ms. Moser's point that we haven't had the cases that our surrounding areas have, but we still don't need to swing the doors wide open. And so what I've tried to encourage them to do is contact the governor, you know, come up with what they're willing to do so that a good plan can be put in place. And hopefully the governor will start into phase one by the end of this week. We'll be, we'll be going into phase one. The other thing of note is that the county does have the ability and municipalities have the ability to put in place stricter restrictions. So there was a lot of discussion, you know, a lot of media coverage on when the governor of Georgia decided to open up and loosen restrictions and basically reopen. I think the mayor of Savannah and Atlanta did not agree with that decision, but they do have the power to put stricter restrictions in place. So, you know, we've, we've got to remember that. And then the other thing is, we are all individually responsible for ourselves and our families. So if you're a business owner and you don't feel that it's the right time to open, then that's your personal decision and you should have the ability to do that. Just like if you're an individual and you don't think it's the right time to yet go to a dine-in if we get to a dine-in situation, you can make that decision. You can make that decision. So there's, we have to be responsible for our own actions too. And you certainly can, don't have to, just because the restrictions are, are removed or they're, they're not as tight as they have been previously, then, then you don't have to do everything. You can make personal decisions and, and actions. So I've been doing a lot of conversations. I've had a lot of, of individuals' discussions via phone and email. I've, I've been staying at home. I mean, I've been working from the house for almost eight weeks now, so it's, it's, I'm getting cabin fever, but, but at the same time, we, we need to be doing the right things and we need to move towards, you know, this in a, in a phased approach with partial reopenings, hopefully starting Friday. I, I hope that we move in-
And in South Carolina, I don't think you're going to start opening next week, South Carolina.
Like, where the beach has been cruising already.
Yeah, I talked with some folks down there, yes, on Saturday. Their outside restaurants or outside cafes are opening today.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I think, you know, I hope we hear the right, the right stuff on Friday, but, you know, I think we might need to consider a letter according to what gets said on Friday. Because, you know, eventually, do you make the cure worse than the cause? You know, do you want everybody to be miserable just so a few people won't be miserable by themselves? You know? For everybody to be broke in the poorhouse.
And I thought the Council of State had a stay in there too. Apparently, I don't know, they haven't gone down that road, but they're supposed to have a stay with the governor on the terminus, things like that, I would think, so.
All right, I just have a couple of things. Met today with Commissioner Newton, Tax Office, the manager, finance, good, it was a good meeting. We talked about payments to fire departments, communication between the departments and the unit system as well as the Tyler technology. Anyhow, thought it was a good conversation. Sounds like we, the manager's putting his arms around it and got everything going the direction it needs to and we appreciate that. Also had a meeting earlier in the week with folks on a Fox pin. I don't know if any of you saw those emails or not. That was a very interesting meeting. It, our, the folks had some concerns with our UDO and met with Travis there with planning and his staff and this looks like it's more of a state issue than it is a county issue. They're going to hook us up with wildlife and we're going to see what we can do going forward, if we do anything going forward, and what we can do. Anyhow, we'll come back to the commissioners when we, when we have some more information to share with you there. That's really about all I have. You all already made the comments about a letter and, and hoping that the, I would like to see us move into phase two and I think Ms. Moser's going to explain to us what that may be. But anyhow, with that being said, we'll, we'll head and entertain a motion for closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I move we go in closed session for item three, attorney-client, item five, discussion of real property acquisition, and item six, personnel, and only after about a 10-minute environmental break.
Okay.
Yeah, we need a break.
Okay, we have a motion for closed session?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, we're in closed session. Thank you, folks. I appreciate y'all being here.